...to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone need to stop at the agenda?
Sure.
What would you propose your colleagues in South of Georgia? I suppose we have three things to do. Second?
All in favor? The next upcoming Select Board meeting is Thursday, June 16th here at the Fire Hall.
I have a request to change that. I popped you guys an email. Can we bump it a week? I'm traveling that week.
I would prefer that we didn't. I have a variety of appointments coming up and it's important for me to keep those.
And it's important for me to attend as well so we can only choose another date.
I would respectfully submit that we have set these dates intentionally beforehand and that people planned their lives around to first and third Thursday.
And my job that pays the majority of my income is requiring me to go to Dallas for a business trip. Trust me, it's not vacation.
I'm not suggesting that it is a vacation. I'm saying that the town of Westback has expectations and has reasonable expectations of preset dates. Is there anything pressing that's coming up on that night that you're aware of?
I don't have anything planned for the agenda yet. There are certainly items we can say tactics that we can tackle that night, anything that needs additional or we definitely need Suzanne's input, the bigger things to be set aside for a time when we all can leave.
I'd like to move the meeting. I mean, I, there's been meetings in some of us in the midst as well. I think it's best that we're all in attendance to represent the community.
My concern is that any item that this board takes up right now is going to be a big item because that's what we've been trying to focus on. We don't have any minutia at this point. I would prefer that all members are in attendance. If all members are not in attendance, if you choose to keep the same meeting schedule, which is fine, then the agenda is going to be very light and it's going to, items are going to be pushed later into the season.
I sent an email out earlier in the week, did acknowledge it at Town Hall as well with Christine. I travel for work a week a month these days. Now the COVID is over, I'm playing catch-up. It's going to happen again in July.
I have, I have concerns that any one of us, any member, anytime we're in the Selectment, if we're going to be out of town routinely for board meetings, how can we change meetings for one of us when the other two of us also make plans based on the schedule? And townspeople also make plans based on the schedule. Town government should not stop because one of us is unable to meet our, our meeting dates no matter what our obligations are. If we cannot meet the obligations, then perhaps we need to reconsider our service.
Well, when I first joined the, it was on Mondays and we changed that for a whim of going from Mondays to Thursdays.
There was a good reason that we changed it.
What was that reason?
The reason is because after projecting out a couple of years, very careful planning, it was determined that if we stay on a Thursday schedule, we wouldn't get any holidays. So meetings would not be bumped due to holidays.
Can I make a motion that we come back to this at the end of the items tonight? And that way everybody gets a chance to process more of it?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? We won't skip over these, come back to it. Okay, thank you. Any Select Board comments, announcements, other than needing to change a meeting on Monday? Number one on the business item is Bullock Road Reconstruction Bid Award.
We received two bids for the project from Reno's Excavation and Pratt &amp; Sons. Bids were opened by Rob Crew of Pine Tree Engineering on May 26th. And the bids are in your packet for review. Reno's Excavation is the apparent low bidder.
I have approval of the contract being given to the low bidder. A second? I'm going to abstain. All in favor? Do you have anything you want to say about it, Steve? When you're really pulling to the end or anything?
You want to?
You want to do it both ends. Get up Tracy.
Go ahead, Steve.
We put our salary off. That's next week. Stop with the side jobs, get the blasting guy lined up. We can do one other thing. I'm speaking to Reno's now. If you guys want to waive the bond, we can take another $2,000 off it. The bond costs $2,200.
Think the bond is necessary for all jobs in uncapacity?
Um, it's a, it's a basic normal job, so it doesn't matter me either way.
It secures the town.
If it was $10,000, but for $2,000, it keeps us all safe.
No, I think it's good. I mean, we've heard it, God, it's all, it's, I was, you know, I was just saying, if you guys go and see it, you know, whatever.
Not appreciated.
And I don't know if, I'm just speaking on top, if you, the town realizes about it. We have a very bad problem with, they call it, winter moths.
Yes.
You guys aware of it?
No, I'm not.
Well, hawks came down and sprayed today and he says that town is covered with winter moths and it's killing the trees. And he was down on a jump sign, those guys, and they sprayed the trees and he showed me. And if you see a tree right now with, looks like leaves, just frost coming on, that's because of these winter moths and already eaten them, they just kind of kill the trees. So if you guys ride around the town, just look up at these trees and if you see any, any people calling about it, something I just.
Not ground, not ground tail?
Not ground tail. They call these old winter moths. I guess the worst. And I do pitch, they get on them.
Oh, goodie, that's what we need. Is that something Suzanne and Justin, maybe you should call and just have a conversation with him about it? If he has any recommendations, it's something we.
I can do that. I'm surprised we haven't received any correspondence about it. Well, you haven't received any.
No, I'm thinking I'll, I'll do some research and post on the website and whatever, some resources on winter moths.
Yeah, because they're, the bullet is out from ground tail.
Most, most people don't go the different to winter moths and the ground tail.
Right. Well, winter moths fly in winter. You can see them.
Well, it'd be good to get educated and.
Right. People like to start calling, they don't realize they know those leaves, see the leaves are already boomed, but they ate them up so quick that they're already missing. So people are going to start calling, quiet down and just get some information, give to them, they call.
Okay, and it'd be good to know what we're looking at if we see strange cabbages too.
I didn't know nothing about it till today. And we looked up at the tree and I said, wow, and he's a huge tree that they just cleaned it off.
And is there something we need to do preventively in the future?
Cancel winter.
Yes, I agree. Yes, let's do that. Anything else, Steve?
No, I just want to know what you did, what you guys decided about your bid process. I got a bunch of work, I gotta get out there, get people going on. I want to just know how you guys want to do it.
One job at a time. I have to say that as I observed the Berry'sville Road being paved, there is a significant difference between what you do on our town maintained roads and what is happening on the Berry'sville Road. We get much thicker, better coverage and I didn't know enough to observe that the last time Berry'sville Road was skinned. It looks good for a while, but it's not going to last for long.
This is the third time they've paved Berry'sville Road since we did their road.
Well, that's a.
They put on five eighths of an inch, we put on one coat inch for four.
It seems not going to hold up.
No, not five eighths.
It's not even joined. I mean, it looks like they did right over it.
Yeah, it's terrible. But that's what they get hired, they only allowed so much asphalt per mile from the state.
Right.
Until they can change something. And I don't, I don't understand, they don't even fix the problems like Middle Smallzil. It's just going to come right back out again. I mean, that was a huge problem in the city. So I bet that'll come out before, before November.
Well, actually, there's still people that have approached me complaining about that. So I don't think it's all that much better than what it was previously.
Oh, yeah, they, right in front of my house, the roads all broke out and they just paved it over. That's what I find them up there, it's, you just, you're doing them, doing them. So that's why whenever we price out a job, we go three quarters of an inch shim over the whole road to get it straight. And then we get another three quarters of an inch cover. So the road's flat. They're making that five eighths and they're shimming the road with it too and using it. So you might have five eighths here and you might have three inches here and nothing here. And that's what you see a lot of times and it peels right out. So that's why you get more for your bike if you go right straight down through it and shim everything out, get it. Your road shake and then go right over another three quarter. That's our rule of thumb that we can do with it.
Well, it, it shows because your work is lasting and that isn't.
Well, there's new roads got a lot of traffic on it too.
Like Smallzil, that's, that has been a huge problem. That's a three foot hole.
But we don't want to take it over so.
No. But it's, it's, they're just going to get called out again. And it took them, they didn't, they didn't patch it. I don't know how many times I brought it up.
Yeah, and I contacted them.
And they, they didn't do anything to it?
No.
Everything that they've done is a yes ma'am on the bottom. I mean, Middle Whispering Hill, when they fixed that, that was, that was probably one of the worst repairs. I see water runs up through it all.
I think it's, it's tough to pick it up.
Yeah, I would classify that as repair.
And then they did after the Reno Senior Road, that political calendar and that drops when you go in.
Well.
There's not, they don't have proof of that.
It has made me very much appreciate what you provide for the town of Westback. I thank you.
Well, thank you.
I understand the strikers are coming Monday.
They are.
Hopefully, fingers crossed.
The road strikers, not the fish.
Correct.
All right. Well, that's good. So I'll make sure I get down again, the false part, go do a little sweeping because I made a mess.
Is that where all that gravel came from?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to business item number two. We're very new resources, Boyd, do you have the numbers for you? They are not present. Do we want to move it to the end? And if they don't show, then we'll make a motion to.
I was at that meeting, so I can kind of summarize, but if you want to wait and see if people show up, we can bump it.
Okay. Let's take it at the end because we do need, we do need to know something about the coverage. Let's move on to item number three, Certificate of Appreciation for New Businesses Proposal. Suzanne?
I think as we see a lot of folks come into the Planning Board and approach the town to establish a business, we should welcome them. And I created a mock-up of the certificate that you guys have in your packet. So that we could maybe get a inexpensive frame and hand it out to them and just tell them we appreciate them choosing us as their location.
I've talked with a couple of different people about this and the kind of question was, why are we, why are we honoring new businesses when we have not done anything to honor people who've been in business here for a long time? My second, my second thought about that was, rather than a certificate, wouldn't it be more welcoming if the Planning Board would be more helpful to new businesses as they're starting? There've been a couple of instances in the last year where it seems as though the Planning Board has been more obstructive. And if we really want businesses, the Planning Board should be as helpful as possible as they make sure that all of the ordinances are complied with.
I still think it would be nice for a business who goes through the process that we welcome into the town. And it shows that we appreciate their revenue support, helping our town run. And no problem extending it out to current businesses. You got to start it somewhere. By putting it off, you'll never do it. At some point, you do something to move forward.
Christine, do you know if other towns do this as an official recognition of a business?
I'm not aware of what other towns do. I think some of the larger towns that have economic development departments, planning departments, they may do something like this, but I'm not familiar with it.
And we had our first strategy with Wayne Farm to talk about it, Economic Development Center. And certainly American Steel moving in as a sizable revenue to the town on an annual basis. And I think we should be thankful.
What, what, what was this about American Steel?
When American Steel came to the town, we were going to receive tax revenue from that as sizable revenue.
Of course.
I understand the question then.
So do we get certificates to have all of us who pay taxes? Are business taxes more important than residential taxes?
I don't think being a hurdle to anyone is going to benefit the town.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, I don't think being a hurdle to business is going to benefit the town. I think supporting them and having them move here is a step in the right direction.
Well, I don't, I don't see that a certificate either encourages or discourages. And it seems as though if the Select Board is signing it, we're signing it on behalf of the entire town. It doesn't, I'm, I'm just confused as to whether the, the benefit of this.
I believe it's called goodwill.
Can I say something?
Of course.
I, I kind of think it's a good idea. I just kind of know the people had American Steel and they, it did feel to them like they were jumping through hoops and going through a lot to get started. And, you know, not that they have ill feelings towards the Planning Board, but just to make everything on a friendly note, why not thank them now that they're up and running? And I don't think other businesses would be looking for a thank you, it's just a small gesture, just a little, even a card, you know, just a, hey, welcome to Westback. I do that with my neighbors. Maybe I'm weird, but it just keeps things friendly between people.
So my concern, I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree with you. The thing is, how do we make it a process through the Planning Board a lot easier to begin with and start the welcoming from there?
Yeah.
Rather than people? Because I know Wayne Farm felt the same way for a while, that we would be in, the Planning Board was getting in the way and not being promoted. So how will we do all of these?
I, I get what you're saying. Well, I think, I think I sit on the meetings on behalf of the Select Board, the Planning Board, and there, there's ordinances that, and we've talked about rewriting them, which is what we're doing as part of the overall comp plan. And I think that there are elements in the ordinances that are presented today that create potential legal pitfalls for the town on how they're written. So it's not, the Planning Board has to hold a steady line until they're written differently. And you can't interpret one way for one person and another way for another. And until they are rewritten, you kind of have to follow how the letter of the law, the ordinance is stated.
I agree with you, still that tone of being an obstructionist rather than being welcoming. And it's not just to new businesses, it's to people who are trying to remodel their homes and sometimes instead of being helpful. And we're working on it and we don't want to change it, but we need to get there. We need to be welcoming to all future and current, we want town residents as we move forward.
Steve and I went through, when we were trying to change the subdivision to add a lot, we presented to the Planning Board, and we weren't prepared. We didn't know everything we needed to know at that first meeting. And the Planning Board just kind of said no. And we really didn't realize we weren't following the right steps. You know, it wasn't really a no, it was just a, you're not doing it right. But it wasn't really laid out to me very well. So we had, we hired an attorney just to help us through the process. And then I realized that there really was never a no, it was just we did it wrong. So if there was somebody that could walk people through what they need to know when they come to the Planning Board, that would be amazing. You know, like they could call the town and say, this is what I want to do, I'm going to, I know I have to go before the Planning Board, what are the steps? What are the, you know?
Isn't that done through the code enforcement officer? I mean, there is a person on staff that starts the process.
I'm wondering if people know, call them though, like I didn't know.
So, I mean, we have, we have people. And maybe that's, you know, that's something that we need to, you know, when you come in to take the application out.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you're saying your first stop should be with the code enforcement officer.
Definitely.
And, and walk through what you need. But he is really the one who brings it to the Planning Board.
But I got three different answers when I brought it to them. One from the code enforcement officer, one from the town appraisal, one from, you know, there was different answers from everybody. So I had to go hire a lawyer to figure it out, you know, for these guys to figure it out on my own.
And I think that's what we're hearing, is these people are calling in front of us about.
Oh, six.
It feels like they do get a lot of triple clutch ones as a number of that. Several, several years ago, we had a meeting with the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen. And it was agreed at that point that the first step for anybody applying for, especially a new business proposal, would be, the first step was to come to the Planning Board, the applicant come to the Planning Board, where the process would be explained to them and informational meeting would be the first step. And I don't know if that was carried through or not, but I certainly think that that would be a very helpful first step.
I think starting with the code enforcement officer who's in town on a regular basis where the, the entire Planning Board outside of him.
So yeah, we're doing it great.
But I was going to explain.
I know, but should you give an answer or you can give a different answer? And that's how we get into these messages that we didn't do.
The town attorney has stated that the code enforcement officer is the person who resolves that.
I think we need to write something up for people to have and be able to follow because every time you ask somebody different in town, you get a different answer. So we need to be consistent, we need to be giving the same answers, and we're not doing that. So if we could maybe put on our agenda a way this process should happen, so we could hand it to people.
I think that's great. I mean, they, they rewrote all the applications for more information on it. The only one that they haven't done is the subdivision. Because that's so lengthy and it required quite a bit of review from the attorney.
So if I could circle back on that, because I've worked with codes in giving guidance to residents and we've really struggled with it because we can say, yep, this is what you need, this looks good, and you go to the Planning Board and they have a problem with it. It's, and it's not necessarily inconsistent, but it's unreliable. We look at an application that was previously approved, we come up with a similar application and something that wasn't looked at before on this one, it's very difficult. So I don't think that, not that you're saying Town Hall is to blame, but I don't think Town Hall is where the problem lies because I do know that John is very good at looking through applications and making sure that everyone has what they need.
I don't, I think Town Hall is probably the most helpful in helping residents move forward in this process. I think what happens between the Selectmen, Town Hall, Code Enforcement, and Planning Board is where the inconsistencies are. We all need to be doing and saying the same thing and it's not.
One of the biggest problems is the rules, laws change so much that no one individual can follow. You know, unless you're a lawyer and that's your job. So basically, if you want your code enforcement officer to be able to answer all these answers, he's got a lot more school to do.
Well, and his defense, when we were approaching, he had just started his presentation.
No, I know exactly. Because, I mean, who, who's going to keep up with all the rules?
And the girls at the Town Hall are wonderful.
I do see your frustration when you do everything, say, I'm telling you to do, and then you take it to college, or you didn't do this, you take it to the Planning Board and they said, you didn't do that. That, that's not the answer, citizens. So we need to just try to come up with a little bit more, we're there, we're working on it. We're not there.
Well, and I think, and when they request to go on agenda, you can request to be on the Planning Board on agenda as an informational session. You don't have an application, you're, you're starting the process. And that is one of the ways to get on the agenda.
And I think that's probably normal. And the.
I didn't know that, but I do now.
The recommendation and the suggestion and the strong direction that the Select Board gave to the Planning Board years ago was, everybody needs an informational meeting. So then everybody's on the same page and on the same page. And, and part of the reason is that John may give an answer, but somebody else has a question that John has not answered. You can't tell who on the Planning Board is going to come up with a question before you get there. And I don't think it's fair to say to the Planning Board, don't ask questions. So developing a way in which people are, A, first welcomed and then have the question, have the proposal in front of the Planning Board, just, this is what we want to do. So the Planning Board can say, well, we need to know about this, this, and this, and this. So that you don't come in with a fully developed plan only to have it shut down. So, so a consistent way of knowing what the questions are going to be, what they're not going to be, so that if I'm coming in with a, with a business plan, I know what I'm going to be asked about. So that everybody can be prepared and we don't get into kerfluffles about people's attitudes or questions or whatever. And we just need to get this stopped.
Well, and that's, the planning is fine. Having them start with informational session is going to delay their process by 30 days also. So there's, I mean, there's things that. And that could be, you know, but it's because they only meet once a month, you need to be able to accommodate that and they, then they need to be prepared 30 days in advance.
Our particular issue was four months. Because it was once a month, we had to come back. But like I said, you know, now I know.
The certificate of appreciation.
But there's no.
I'd say we need to be milestone by having a full-time code enforcement officer. I think we're heading in the right direction with that.
But I think new forms, I think new forms of.
Yeah, well, new forms and working together for a few years, I think, I think you need to hold on to the same one for a while.
Do you have any motion proposal that you want to do for this?
I would propose. I would propose that we move forward with welcoming new businesses with a certificate of appreciation coming to the town. I think it's a very positive experience to end on that note after we got through all the process with us in the town.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Would you like to send it so we can vote on it? I would. I personally would like to discuss it a little bit more, if there's a way to do this on top of also doing some kind of appreciation to our current businesses.
I think it's great to, I, I have no problem sending a certificate out to every business in the town, thanking them for being part of our community.
I just think if you could do them all as a beginning, and then you can.
Absolutely.
I personally hang it in my office.
I, I'll change my motion to create a certificate for current and future business applicants as they move into our town, to thank them with a certificate of appreciation for joining our community.
And I'll send that motion. All in favor? I think, I think the, the appreciation certificate rather than a welcome certificate, the change in the, in the direction is, is much closer to what?
It was always an appreciation.
Well, no, it says a welcome, and that's, that's, to me, that's a different thing than an appreciation.
Not at all.
So do you need me to make a motion on changing the?
No.
Her motion was just to move forward.
Okay.
Didn't specify this.
Yeah, I think we'll just have to come up with a certificate.
This is a MACA that was just a sample to.
And figure out how we're going to. Can, do we want to keep going, or do we want to move back?
It looks like we have a few marine resources here.
Well, I, I just want to say, I want to deal with the abandoned property issue while Steve's here. I don't know if you were planning on staying for the whole meeting or.
No.
And you're taking the abandoned property with you?
Moving down to Article Number Five, Discussion Regarding Disposal of the Abandoned Camper That Is Currently Parked Next to the Suction. I talked with Sheriff Mary, and he said that he sent his staff down to look at it. He will not send them into the camper without respirators. He said they did attempt to look for a VIN number, it's been scrubbed. The last known location of that camper was in Coral Gables, Florida. I said, what will happen if we just crush it and get rid of it? And he said, you know, I understand there's a process, normally the town would need to go through BMD, blah de blah. He said, crush it and get rid of it. So I would like permission to go ahead and do that. I move permission. Steve, can you tell the Board what that might entail?
Well, I was asked about it when we first grabbed it, and they said if we drag it over there, then crush it up right there and dispose of it. So all it's gonna take is hooking onto it and drag it over there to the.
So is there any cost associated with this?
Probably have to go across the sky. I'm sure there's gonna be whatever the tipping fees are. So we probably have.
We should do it on a Saturday then, because that's a West Bath day. Or Tuesday.
We can ask Castella if they would waive the tipping fees. They might do it considering where we are in the contract process.
There is a long way from that. That thing is packed full of crap.
Yeah.
I mean, I bet it's probably, it's probably, you're probably gonna end up with about six tubs.
Well, the tipping fees go back to West anyway, so you'd think they'd waive that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there will.
We should approach and see what their comment is.
Right. There may be a cost. Because it's different. They did not charge us when we disposed of.
They may not with this either.
They may not, but.
I, I move we crush it. I move we crush it and let us hopefully collaborate with Castella.
Well, I make a motion to drag it over there and not crush it, because it's easier to drag it over one piece than a bunch of pieces.
Oh, yeah, no, okay, just drag it to them and let them.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor? How many years?
How many years has it been to you?
It's been two years.
Did you do some work?
It's been years.
They came first.
Adam was here. It wasn't the town, it was the meeting, wasn't it, the school?
Yeah.
It was at the meeting house.
The meeting house, I'm glad.
Brought, brought here from Coral Gables, Florida.
And that flat tile is there. And it was the best.
And all in the morning.
Yeah, it was, it was like peanut butter, left open on the table.
Sure there's no bodies in there?
I know, that's why I just said it.
I don't think anybody's there going to see.
You're the dude's crack to do, you know.
Well, like I said.
Well, it's been three years since.
Uh, so we'll go back to Article Number Two. Everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
Steve, you can stay or you can go. Thank you.
I actually didn't get the answer on what we're doing on the bid process.
I think you and I can talk about the bid process. I mean, for the little jobs, we're not ready to lump them together yet, in my opinion. And you've already done that this spring with, you know, sweeping and that sort of thing. With the larger projects, I think with the painting, any painting that you might do, we can talk about it and possibly put out a bid.
Okay, because I got like thirty thousand dollars worth of ditching down in Sabina. And I could get done this year, and I'd like to just have, go talk to one of the contractors and ask, I wish to ask, and say, can you go do this for thirty thousand dollars? I'll have you write up a thing saying.
What does the Board think?
I think if we're gonna have a thirty thousand dollar job, that should go out to bid. I do. I think that if we bid something of that size.
Well, I'll mention this again. We had two bidders on that last job, and none of the contractors from West Bath even bid on such a bid.
I still think we need to follow our process as a, as a town.
I mean, whatever you created, and I'm just, Steve, just let me know.
Do we need to, if we put it out to bid, do we need to have that engineered?
Um.
What would your recommendation be?
My recommendation, anything that goes out to bid, it should be at least a bid package sent through our engineer. So everybody bidding on the same exact thing. Not say, you know, writing up something to bid on, and then, you know, there's no direction that way.
Right. Okay.
So as if I went up and told somebody, okay, thirty, you know, if you can do that thirty thousand dollars, what I budgeted, do it. But bid process could, you could, that's gotta be all over the place.
But that's, but if you can, if you said to someone, and I'm gonna say generically, here's eight and a half miles of ditching, or whatever it is, I'm just opening it up together, and I'd like to know, here's the area, what's your cost? We can send that out. There's plenty, I think plenty of other smaller contractors that maybe aren't looking at the size of a bull rock job, but they could do that in a smaller capacity that have different equipment.
We just said, put it up seven and a half miles, that's a slight.
I'm just, I, I generically said, I don't know the distance, you know, varies, Sabina's like a mile.
Well, keep working on it. I'll work with you guys the way you want, but we need to get projects done.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
I need some kind of guy.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Good night.
You too.
Back to business. Article Number Two, Members of the Marine Resource Board will attend the meeting to discuss warden coverage as of July first, 2022.
Hold on one second. Did you have a question about that prior to this?
No, 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 I was just saying that.
We're raising our hand. I didn't want to make sure.
I guess that's habit.
I didn't want to start something unless we were forward anymore.
So Warren, do you want to lead this discussion?
Well, the whole discussion really is pretty simple. We need a warden. I want to get the ball rolling. I don't know if we have to go to the Budget Committee, Planning Board, whatever. We at least need to put an ad in the paper from the town of West Bath to, because I've talked to several people and the SAG department, Timmy will tell you who we've talked to. I've talked to the state wardens, they've got names out there, people that might be interested. If we can get somebody, we just gotta get the ball rolling, because we're, we're warden short. Dougie's already said that he can't do the job. There's been a lot of people in town that shouldn't be in town, and things stolen, and threats made. It's getting to the point where we've gotta get a warden, so if there's, if we can get the process moving.
Well, the process is moving.
It is moving.
Have people shown an interest to do it that you know of?
Um.
Yes.
You've talked to several people.
Okay.
She just says yes.
Yeah.
I talked with Deputy Reed from the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office yesterday. He covers many towns. He said if we're in a bind, he would be happy to help us out. Like if we, we don't have anybody right away as of July first, we could work with him, and he would provide some coverage. He is concerned that he won't be able to provide the kind of coverage that you're looking for. So that's one option.
Short term, but do you have candidates that have shown an interest?
Well, I mean, it's not really my job to go out and find somebody. We gotta have to put an ad in the paper or something, but.
Well, I, I'm not sure that we need to put an ad in the paper. I spoke with Lieutenant Quinn from the Saginaw County Sheriff's Office this morning. And he has interest as well. I'm going to meet with him tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. If either of you want to attend, that would be great. He wants, Sheriff Mary initially said that he really wasn't interested in having anyone from his department provide coverage. But after Lieutenant Quinn spoke with him, Joel said, well, why don't you find some more, find out some more information about what West Bath is looking for, and we'll talk about it. So Lieutenant Quinn is coming to my office tomorrow morning at nine, and we can talk about it.
Well, a PowerPoint would be combining a few towns. Pittsburgh also is losing their warden, Dougie.
Well, is that for sure? Because Doug said he was wanting to stay on. So I, I don't want to.
I know, but he came to our meeting and said he was not able to.
Yeah, he's only staying on for six months. He's not staying on forever.
Also, also John Hens from Georgetown.
Well, that's a possibility.
Is retiring. Wants to retire, he just can't find anybody to replace.
That's fine. That's something we can do.
We may get too big, though.
It doesn't have to happen immediately.
Right, but I'm just thinking it might be a PowerPoint to get it all together, because if he, if he really wants to do it, he, he, obviously, if we had three towns and two towns, we'd get more money.
Right, sure, it makes sense.
Yeah.
So, but short term, I'm certainly, I think, having a law enforcement officer in a capacity where, where you have mentioned that there are some issues and thievery and whatnot happening, it may not be a bad start for us.
He's good stuff.
To have someone in official capacity.
Yeah.
And in that position could help bring it back online.
It needs to be back online, because we got a lot of people coming into town that feel that they have the right to do what they're doing. And of course, I'm the chairman, so I'm the one getting credit.
But I'm just saying, I'm saying by having, so I'm intrigued by certainly having a law enforcement officer interested in doing that.
I've talked to Lieutenant Quinn quite a few times, and he knows the situation.
So he knows what he's getting into also. You know, he's not gonna be like, oh my God, oh my God.
And enforcement is just becoming more and more difficult all the time.
And so someone who's comfortable in enforcement, I think, is a benefit right now.
That's excellent. I mean.
So Officer Reed knows this too, yeah, he needs somebody to come in and clean this mess up, so they know what's going on.
One, and to, and to fix West Bath. I mean, I think it's our priority, first and foremost, is here. And then as it expands, and if we've got a different situation six months from now, we can address it as it happens. But I think our immediate need is our town.
Yes.
Well, that's true. I mean, it'd be nice to have a warden just for our town, but I'm just saying.
Let's start with what we need, and then worry about what we don't.
Yeah, it just takes some time to bring different priorities together.
Like, I'll probably have to go through the Budget Committee and all that, right? I mean.
Doesn't go through the Budget Committee, but the Select Board would need to.
Because there is money available, I know.
We were paying someone already, so that's already been allocated.
Okay.
I mean, you had, you had a budget for that person, an individual, so it's.
All right, that's, that's why I'm here. I just wanted to make sure that it was, the ball was rolling.
The, the other thing that I think we need to continue to do is to press this county government to provide law enforcement for towns that have marine resources protection. Because it's a lot of territory that halftime people are just not able to keep up with. We've seen that for years now.
Oh, I agree.
And we need somebody who's on the water full time, making sure that the town's ordinances, ours, Pittsburgh, Woolwich, Georgetown, Rouseville, we're all in the same boat, and we all provide a lot of money to the county budget.
Well, in other words, somebody that works for the state.
Somebody who works for the county, who is our, our marine resources warden.
Yeah. Well, that's what I talked to the other day, was state wardens. And they actually had several suggestions, people that might be willing to take the decision, and they're gonna be calling the Town Hall.
But she's, she's talking about getting help.
Oh, I know, I understand, I understand, yeah, from the state itself.
I'm talking long term. This is not a problem that's going.
It's always been running into a brick wall with that, though, because the state says the town laws are on their own. Has nothing to do with us.
State warden doesn't enforce town rules.
Right, right. But experience that with the, the.
If we end up working with Lieutenant Quinn, he'll be able to use the county's equipment. If we work with Deputy Reed, he's not sure he'll be able to use Lincoln County's equipment. So there would be some issues there too. We might have to supply somebody with the necessary.
We have a vote, do we not?
We do have a vote.
We have a vote.
And when we had John here, we had all kinds of equipment planned.
As far as caring, I don't know what would happen there.
Carrying.
Right, but what I'm saying is we could do the same thing.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure we, we're talking the same. Well, and, and so law enforcement, I'm intrigued by, I, I'm a fan of having.
Yeah.
A law enfor, at least short term.
That's what I want.
I, I think it will.
No, absolutely.
Then I want it contracted. I would prefer not to have an employee. I think we need to get away from the employee liability. And I think our coverage would be better. And it would contract it. We're going to employ an armed peace officer of whatever sort. That means a whole different governmental. Yes, it does. Bureau, bureaucracy. I don't think we're ready for that. It's, it should, it should be a county responsibility. So it's been a brick wall. Walls come, come to the ground. We just keep working.
Is there any, what do we receive to do that?
I think we should move with your plans tomorrow. You've got the Lieutenant Quinn coming in. And I, I think if he's prepared to assist in, in our needs, I'm a fan of that.
I think as far as the county is, we just keep hammering it.
Hammering it up.
Yeah, I think.
Who's hammering?
If Sheriff Mary sees that a model is working, he might, you know, be more willing to get a program going. And that's the same with animal control. At some point, we're gonna need big support for animal control.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. That's why I'm here. I just wanted to make sure things were progressing. It's been close to six months now where we knew Dougie was not.
I didn't know six months ago.
Well, it's been a while, since Dougie has mentioned to me that he's not able to do his job. And it's pretty obvious, and he finally came out and said it, so.
Personally, it's always nice to have members of committees show up at these meetings. So personally, I've been here, I think going on five years, and this is the first time I've seen you at a Selectmen meeting, and I appreciate your coming, and I'd like to see.
We're here to work as teachers.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
But it takes us, it takes communication.
Last time I was, the last time I went to all the Selectmen meetings was when we booted Pittsburgh. I mean, that was, that was a while ago.
But it's, it's easier to do this, this way.
Yeah.
And not make it a fire drill.
Yeah.
You know, even if you could get, you know, quarterly representation at a minimum. I know you guys have your meetings, but it'd be nice to have someone plan to communicate with us, so we just see how things are going.
We talk a lot about different things, and we don't have your representation here, so it'd be nice.
Okay.
Well, just knowing, you know, I didn't know that there was, I was being stolen. Well, just knowing, you know, I didn't know that there was, I was being stolen and stuff like that, so it's, you know, those are.
Oh, yeah, that's, there has been, yep.
You know, that's, that's just stuff that we needed.
His next door neighbor, his friend in forty years stole right up, right up the lawn in the land. I mean, it was, and I hate to say it, but I think I know it was the crowd that did it, you know? So it's.
They're not welcome here.
No, they're not.
We at West Bath to keep our people.
That's why I keep my votes at home.
Decide to do anything about it without solid proof though.
Exactly, yeah. But, yeah, no, if you want me to come to selecting meetings, I'll come.
I love the fact that you see you show up every now and then because I think that keeps us all, we know what's going on in your world. We know what's going on in our world and I think it's very good.
Yeah, you know, and right now everything's going pretty good. We're all certified for all the water testing with the DMR. And they, I'm in touch with the new marine biologist. And we're doing a co-op survey and a clam survey within the next month. Because they're kind of, you know, zeroing in on West Bath. So we actually have them on the subject.
Why do you think they're zeroing in on West Bath?
Cause they.
Estimate, nothing on.
Jealousy.
Jealousy. We've got, we've got somebody, we've got somebody in town who likes to brag and say he's doing this and doing that. I'm the best digger ever. He can sell somewhere else and, and, you know, and then we got guys from other towns saying, oh, they've got all this product and blah, blah, blah. I'm very welcome for them to come into West Bath and see what we got. They'll, they'll attach what we got, that's fine.
It's not always gonna be as good as they.
He's just saying, they're not gonna be amazed like they are in some other towns.
A lot of the other towns have way too many licenses and they're all harvesting their flax. And they're saying that we need to give out more licenses to people because we have product. Well, we only have what's seventeen licenses or something like that.
We don't have the flax at the other town.
There's a lot of pressure for non-residents want licenses in West Bath. But for Yelly's, West Bath only needs to give out one non-resident for each ten resident licenses. Right now, we have three non-resident diggers and only, I think we only have thirteen.
Right.
In-town harvesters.
Yeah. But I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, other towns, people that harvest are looking at our town saying, oh, well, let's just move right in. You know what I mean? We don't harvest the bounty that most towns do. Brunswick, Harpswell, Freeport, they, this guy's coming in with nine, ten visual. We're lucky to get four or five and that's an experienced digger that's been digging for forty years. So I'm, I'm very much welcome, what's her name? The new marine biologist. I'm very wel-.
Ari Leach.
Ari Leach.
Yeah.
For her to come in, actually do the, help us with the survey because she's gonna realize, wow, what's going on here?
Is she gonna survey the lake as well?
She's not gonna do the lake. She wants to start with Long Cove. We're gonna do a survey on Sunday.
Yeah.
For Browns.
I saw the, I saw.
And then, yeah, and I meant to talk to you about that because I hope, I hope you're okay with us coming out and parking down on the road down there.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and the DMR, after we get that done, I'm gonna talk to Erin Leach and she wants to come down to a clam survey.
Okay.
On the other side.
On, on the Long Cove side.
On Long Cove side, yeah. And we'll probably assist her with that too.
I'll let the family know who's gonna be a part.
Yeah, there probably will be something. I mean, we'll, we'll be very squeal about it.
What time?
We're gonna try to, it starts at nine thirty, eight thirty.
Do you want coffee?
I'm gonna bring donuts like I always do. Donuts and coffee.
I hate to catch a plane once you get drunk.
Actually, I talked to the staff good and she wants me to do clams too. So she wants to do clams and co-logs in Browns Sunday. And then she wants to come down with DMR and do clams in Long Cove at some given time in.
Okay.
After we get our survey done, when they, before they come down, she's gonna contact me so we can come help with her survey. Because she's only got, I think, one or two people that can help her out. So it would take her, she wouldn't get it done.
Yeah, okay. Well, between Dave and me, we can let people know that there may be some strangers around.
Sunday morning.
Sunday morning.
Yeah, and I'll let you know the next day when the DMR comes down.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess we're done.
That's it.
Are you all together?
No, no, he's, he's one, he's a wholesaler right down the street.
Yeah, I was happy to hear I wanted to get a.
Certificate?
Thank you, Larry, yeah. And then my office too.
Did we all get one too?
You have a place of business, we're happy to get you one.
I got a stir fry. I just, I got it all cut up and ready to stir fry it, so.
You got dinner in the front seat.
And this is, I mean, before, select board rule of procedure draft. Nothing that I read made by Karen Campbell then. It seems to codify what we have been doing. And it also adds a few things that I've been asking for, for years, which is to have more advanced notice of items on the agenda so that we can have more complete information provided to us. I like having something in writing so that when we do have people just pop in and start in and have no idea why they're here or what they're talking about and being expected to be able to speak to it. This makes it a lot easier, waiting to communicate information, trying to have people to speak to any certain articles. So I do like, like reading in writing. It just makes it much clearer.
Me too, Kathy.
Maybe all my work with the state, it needs to be in writing or it didn't happen. Maybe you have it sometimes, it's quite simple. Would this, would this, the only question that I really had was, would this process preclude somebody's coming in and talking to the town administrator, saying, we need to have this one? Would this preclude anybody doing that?
No, that, that's.
There's a section here that says you have to have it through by the Thursday before the meeting. So that provides a timeline for that.
Yeah.
And that could, those things would be, would be done in consultation with whoever was the chair as well. If, if.
I think it's set for the chair to bring it to, to the administrator or for us to bring it to the administrator.
Right, it gives them options so that everybody has an opportunity to come to me to get something on the agenda.
Do we post this agenda, this information?
We don't post the packets, we post the agenda.
We should post that.
I used to post the packets when you emailed it to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can start doing that. I didn't remember doing that, but.
Because I think it allows them to see the detail of what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Like at the last meeting, Madeline said this is gonna give the public time to review it. And I'm thinking, public's not gonna review it because public doesn't have it.
Right, they always see the agenda ahead of the meeting.
But if we, if we email the packet again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And give them for a little while.
Okay.
That does give other people a chance.
And it gives me all the numbers, I mean.
Ah.
Otherwise, I'm not.
But I think perhaps you should shoot for maybe forty-eight hours prior then?
Forty-eight hours prior to.
So it's office at least twenty hours prior to the meeting. You should be on the website. Should we back that up a day? Do forty-eight? Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes I have to pack it out for forty-eight hours.
You usually do. I'm just saying that we should post it.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Because that, it just, if we're looking for community input, it gives them a chance to see the detail.
Sure. Maybe they have some information they wanna research when.
Yep, yep, I think it's better than more time. Want to change it to forty-eight hours then?
Yeah.
On page one. And we still have the opportunity for public comment.
Absolutely.
So it's not that, yeah, but it's, it gives people the chance to communicate. Like, I don't know why you're here, but you have a chance to speak in your public comment.
We may, we may want to.
Just saying.
Sorry, I'm just waiting. Okay, number six, town administrators report.
Oh, okay, was there a formal adoption? Do we vote on this?
Well, I guess we can do it with the.
As amended.
As amended. As amended, yeah. I move that we move forward with the select board rules of procedure as amended.
Second, a favor?
Okay. The pressure tank at the town office died this past week. I went downstairs into the smaller meeting room and I noticed one of the boxes that was sitting in the corner was soaked.
Oh, dear.
So I went into the furnace room and realized that there was a leak. So I called Ellis. Ellis said that the pressure tank wasn't even really working when he took it out. But he showed up and he replaced it right away and that's all taken care of. We don't have an invoice yet, but.
What other, what was in that box that was damaged and is there anything else that is?
It was old planning board records.
Old.
I'm not sure. I haven't gone through the box yet, but I'll make sure everything is salvaged. Yeah. So that was unfortunate, but, and because it, it had to be recent because it was very wet. The annual audit will begin on Wednesday.
This is for?
The town audit.
And for what year?
The tax year.
For which tax year?
Yeah, for the year ending twenty twenty-one. So Brewer's office expects to finish by the end of next week with the municipal side. They haven't made a commitment yet for the school side. However, Emily has filed for her final extension with the Department of Education. They came back and told her that if she doesn't submit a draft by the end of June, a draft audit, that they will begin to withhold funding.
Why are we so behind with that?
Well, our auditor informed us that.
No, why is the school so behind?
The school isn't behind. They had everything on a Google Drive and they provided it to Brewer's office last September. So they were ready to go right away. Brewer indicated that because of all of the funding that's coming in from the feds, that most schools in the state are behind.
So they're withholding funding for everyone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure the details, but I just wanted to make you aware that that might become an issue.
So.
I'm not sure if it's an internal issue with our auditor. It may be, but it might be something we need to talk about.
Yes, I know rather than later because that's not much time.
No, so we need a draft audit. In theory, they should, they should do theirs before ours if they're gonna lose funding.
It doesn't work that way. Brewer says they can't do it. They have made statements. Emily has been contacting them regularly and they have come back and said, we can't do it because of the federal funding that's coming through.
So how does that part of the review for Emily to get a draft audit done?
I don't, it depends on Brewer's office. Emily doesn't have any control over it.
I think we need to be a little more firm with Brewer.
So I don't know if we want to have a conversation with maybe school board members if you have the next meeting.
It's really not them, it's Brewer.
Right, but they're the ones who work with Brewer.
Right.
For that part of the audit.
I don't think we have time for that. I think, is there some way that you can reach out to Brewer?
I reached out to the Brewers and they weren't even going to start on our audit.
I always think about somebody on the school board. I mean, I don't think postponing to another meeting to have a discussion with them is.
We're gonna run out of time.
I just think, what I, what I'm trying to convey is that it's probably not going to get done through no fault of Emily's. I want to make that clear. It doesn't have anything to do with what's happening at the school.
But if the school loses funding, it triples down to our budget to replace that.
I understand that and that's why I'm informing you. But what I'm trying to convey is that it's actually the school board that works with the auditor in this context. So.
Right, so I think waiting for our next electman's meeting is two poems. Is there some way you can have that discussion with the head or do you want us?
Or do it as a Zoom meeting.
Call and.
But even if we had, if we wanted, we could do it as a Zoom meeting. I'm, I'm available between now and the thirteenth to have a, to, I don't even want it that long. I'd rather do it like this coming week if we can get a Zoom meeting with the school board.
They don't need this week.
But we don't either. We're asking an, an immediate need to address their budget. What can we do to help expedite?
My belief is that Emily Thompson is probably doing everything that she possibly can to expedite the process.
I've seen the correspondence, so I know she is.
So why did you suggest that we have immediately that priority?
I suggested it because I, I think if it's of concern to this board that you're gonna get the most information from the school board as to what their concerns are if funding is withheld.
That needs to happen soon.
Right, I think we should have a Zoom meeting with everyone, with the school board and the select board and hear what their concerns are.
Can you see if that is possible?
Yes, I can certainly do that.
Because we certainly can't call it anyone's school board. But if you, if you could find out and set something up, that.
Yeah, I will, I'll contact Emily tomorrow and see.
This is gonna be catastrophic.
It could be substantial funding. I don't know how much it is.
I don't know how long it will take the auditor to complete the audit, but I'm very concerned at this point.
Have we asked them what their tentative timeline is? Are they able to get it by the end of the summer?
When I contacted them about our side of the audit, I didn't get a very positive response when I pushed them to start hours. It's, I feel it's not my place to push them on the school side, although I did mention it.
But it's coming from our town funding, so in theory.
Well, it's Emily and the school board. They understand.
There's a lot of bodies whose job it is to handle that. Is it difficult to back out in their opinion or? And I will attest from other spots in my life that getting an audit even for a small organization is very difficult right now. We've been trying for two and a half years at the Morris Bar for instance and.
Do you have a similar audit back?
Yeah, yes, and we've tried other auditors of theater.
Does the state have any other recommendations?
And some people.
That's a good question for the school board.
Some people would use to do lots. Should they be there at our meeting too? I mean, is there anything they can do to assist us with?
To at least pause the temporary loss of funding. It's not, I mean, for them to turn around and take money away from a school when it's not the school that takes it away.
So would Jane or somebody? Is Jane Quinn still there or is it?
She's still our, she's still our legislator.
Shall we both get in touch with Jane?
Um, yeah, that's fine.
I think, so I, I think I want to go back to what Kathy brought up though. Can we shoot for something this coming week potentially with the school board? I'm wide open.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with Emily and see what.
Except for Thursday night.
Yeah, let's just remember too, that's right, but let's remember this is a big week for this area. It's alumni, it's graduation, so alumni is classes. I don't think it's free as we're hoping it will be.
Amy, you have.
Why, why Zoom?
If we can't do it in person, if we couldn't make it in person, it'd be easier to. If we can't do it in person, if we couldn't make it in person, it'd be easier to at a minimum Zoom.
Well, I would say suggest an in-person meeting that's supposed to Zoom.
If we can, but if it's going to expedite it, whatever's going to be the quickest way to get us there, th- this coming week. I can, I can do in-person.
If it's important, which it is, I would think that the school board could arrange with your board to, to meet. Doesn't seem asking too much.
I'm available every day next week except Thursday.
Okay.
To do that. You guys have any conflicts?
I don't know. If we don't know what the date is, we can't commit to having our conflict.
Well, let me get in touch with Emily and see what we can put together.
And I just think try and be proactive because if we keep kicking the can down the road, all of a sudden we're going to hear this. Your funding is being withheld.
Well, I just don't want anybody to be surprised by it.
And when, as things have been sometimes somewhat tense between the two boards, you make it clear that this is in alliance, not in opposition, that we want to do whatever it is, that we need the help.
Okay. Well, in renewables. The schedule, Mark Bauer's schedule is pretty tight for the next week. He's not able to meet next week. I let him know that we'd like to do a remote executive session with him. He's not available next week. Suzanne, I'm assuming you won't be available remotely the following week? So, we're looking at. My calendar. So, we're down to the week of the twentieth. Anybody aware of any conflicts that week? And that also brings us back to whether or not we're going to change our meeting day. Which we should probably talk about.
Close true, I can have the calendar and then I can do a work.
I'm open that whole week. Hope you've got your weekers on.
Always.
Wouldn't he do it in person? That week?
I think he would do it in person or remote. Our last meeting, we talked about doing it remote, but either way.
The twentieth is a town holiday.
Yeah, the twentieth, yeah. Twentieth is Juneteenth.
I'm open the whole week. So, whatever works for you, anyone else, I'll make work.
Do we want to? Is Monday the twentieth?
That's Juneteenth.
That's a holiday.
So, that Monday's the holiday. So, do we want to do the twenty-third Thursday? Is the, is Thursday the twenty-third?
Yes.
Do we want to set up a meeting with him and have our select man's meeting on that same?
I would truly appreciate that change of schedule.
On the twenty-third, I could do that. So, are we all in agreement that we will change our select man's to the twenty-third? And with Walden, we do it on the same night?
Is it with Walden or with attorney?
With the attorney.
With the attorney, yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, do you want to start earlier? Do you want to start at five? Can you start at five?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'll find out if he's available.
Either start with executive session or you start with the meeting.
Executive session.
We went over last time, didn't we?
We did.
Oh, like by a lot?
Yeah.
So, should we start at four thirty, four forty-five?
If you can do it. I'm not sure what your schedules are.
If Mr. Bauer is available.
Four thirty?
Yeah, I can make that work. And we just went way over last time. I want to give them enough time, we're way over.
And make sure that we can get this real because last time we had the other issues.
The quilted.
Yeah, and if we can't say.
We do that top of the aisle. Yeah, at some point you can move back there.
Oh, no, that'll be fine on the twenty-third. It was, it's just the second Thursday of the month that's an issue.
So, four thirty here on the twenty-third.
Anything else on the?
I just want to have you start thinking about the Spirit of America Award. We have until the end of this month to choose a recipient. If you would like to do that this year.
Did we do it last year?
To the fire department.
They didn't have a celebration, so the fire department was mailed a certificate. But it will be highlighted in the town report, which will come out as soon as the audit is done in twenty twenty-five.
We can't wait that long for the school.
Okay.
Okay, so think about that. We have a municipal quitclaim deed that Julie drafted. It's just to eliminate an old tax lien that's on the books that should have been discharged a long time ago. For Edward Enrobert Tremolay, map U eleven, lot thirty.
Where is it located?
I don't know.
Should, should we move that? I'm sorry, say again. We should, we should move.
Yeah, there should be a motion for that.
And with approval of the quitclaim deed as presented. I just don't feel like I know is what I am signing here. I'm sorry, but.
Sometimes tax, old tax liens from prior years, long ago, are just, they're not discharged because of an error.
So, are we taking the land or are we just discharging them?
No, we're just charging them.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed? Clerical panel. Thank you. I had one once.
Also, I'm.
Anything else?
No, not too many.
Future agenda items.
So, what were the things that you want out of that?
I think we should probably talk about the Casella contract next time.
Are we going to have them come back in?
If you would like them here, I'll certainly invite them. If you feel like you're ready for that.
I actually got a complaint from Rebecca LaValle who lives right across from me. I'm saying it's been four of them. So, I don't want to get her, see if she would attend.
If we do it at the next meeting and Mark Bauer is already here, he is the one who is reviewing the contract for us. Would you like him to stay?
Yes, and I would like Rebecca to come in too.
Would that be the appropriate time or not? Maybe not, it might be too much in one.
I think they need to hear from someone other than who they've heard from.
I, I can ask her, I don't have a problem with that.
And that would be at five, then first on the agenda, so she could be ready at five thirty?
Yes, and I think it's, I think his name is Mark Nicole. What is it? Nicole. Nicole. Actually, she came to me and she had no idea that it was happening, so it was.
It just needs to be addressed permanently.
So, with Mark here for the meeting, that will be an open session, that part of it. So, we won't, just to make it clear, we won't be doing any negotiation of the contract. But it would be helpful to have them here to talk about the issues that we're facing so we could.
Well, we could add that to the executive session prior with Walden if we had questions about it with Walden Renewable and then get into the discussion with them where he sees areas.
Right, I suppose we could do that.
Yeah, if there's time, I think.
If there's time.
He at least lets us know what he thinks the issues are that we can then talk about with Casella.
Okay. Good.
Any future agenda items? Yeah. Winter moths, can we do something with that? Maybe not next, but some kind of an entomologist to tell us what to do and what we can do at home about taking care of these beasts?
Yeah, let's see what we can find out.
It's funny because I had two moths in the house this past week. They're tiny little ones and I was like, huh, get away from my sweaters.
And I was also wondering about this summer if there might be a possibility that we could have the office people work at home just as a benefit to them if they wish to do so. And I was also aware, as I told my guest friend the other day, that Christine has a particularly long commute and I know she gets interrupted a lot. So, a day working in her own office might be a benefit. I think it's worth talking about, both as a boon to the office staff and as a motion of mercy perhaps. It cost me fifty bucks the other day to fill my Toyota Corolla. God. Was it going to, Kathy? It's not going to be. So, I, I just, it might be worth talking about.
I presume that we're not going to close the office.
No, no, it'll be kind of like on a rotating basis. They can figure out who wants to come in on when and, and just have it be one day a week every now and then or one day a week each person taking a turn.
I didn't, I have not clearly thought this out.
So, I guess, do you feel that you're fully functioning and capacity? You've got two people here, do you feel you can get your job done in that timeframe?
Well, I do have the longest commute of all of us.
I'm taking the three months. Taking the commute out of it, do you feel that you can get your job done?
Well, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we take this up tonight. I'm proposing this in.
I just want to hear what their feedback is though, it'll help make a decision.
Midsummer honestly is a quieter time, you know, because the budget period is over and the fall registrations and such have started with the tax commitment. But I don't, I think it's a very small window. We have vandered about, a lot of towns have gone to a four-day, ten-hour work week, which would certainly save a day's worth of commuting for, which would be more of a long-term thing to think about. I don't think it would be like a summer solution necessarily, but it might be a summer solution.
Well, and having a ten-hour work day certainly makes us more open to the community, you know.
Yeah, there's always that.
A rotating schedule.
And we could do like.
Thursdays are a late day.
Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday and shift, so there's still full coverage. So, if you were going to do something like that, I would really like to have the communities in.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely. But for a short-term thing, I can say from my perspective, there are certain things that I do as part of my job that would be easier to do at home because it's absolutely quiet. And if I had one day a week or every other week where I could just work at home and focus on a policy or ministers or whatever I happen to be doing, that's easier for me.
I'm not opposed to four ten-hour days generically. But I think, I think.
I don't think it would be good to just for the summer and then go back to the long term. Because I think it's been brought up, we don't want to discuss it tonight. We have people here waiting for something to think about, we're just going to bring up another.
And scheduling. Ms. Suzanne, are you going to be out of town any consistent week or that we could count on?
No, I happen to be traveling, it turns out, the third week of the month in June and July.
And do we go beyond that?
No, I, I, at this point, I have no travel schedule for August or September. I do have stuff scheduled in November and December.
Then it would make sense to me on the twenty-third that we would know that because we all have plans this summer.
I actually sent an email to both of you or the.
An email? We cannot respond to emails in the middle of, in between. Public discussion is necessary to decide when meetings are. I, I, I do not read those emails from you and I will not respond.
So, yes, I'm traveling the week of June. I'm actually traveling the twentieth to the twenty-third in, in July. So, I'm hoping for the seventh, I can make the seventh work, I can make the fourteenth work, or I can make the twenty-eighth work for meetings.
So, your request for the next meeting was to know.
I need to know when you're going to meet so that I can plan my life.
So, you need your schedule on the next.
I need to know when she's going to be available for meetings.
The only week I cannot meet in July is the week of the eighteenth.
And why about August? I'm planning to be alive in August.
At this point, I have no travel plan for my job. So, I will make sure that my meetings work on the first and then Thursday. Thank you.
And in July, we cannot be here on July fourteenth, just so you don't know.
Do you want to move to the twenty-eighth ahead of here?
Fourteenth. Come up today if you need to. Like, I don't know how to count right in front of me.
I will make any other day work.
Sorry, this day is a long public comment. I don't know, Mr. Sweeney, I'm sorry, I don't know.
John Jones.
John Jones, I don't know who would like to start.
I'm just here to observe. That's all I was, that's all I'm here for.
Easy cat times. Then we'll start with you. You see them?
Mr. Jones.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys all for what you're doing. I watched all your videos recently. Appreciate your time and devotion, I guess it is. This is my girlfriend, Christine. We live at Long Island. I'm sure you guys are aware of what's going on over there with a solar company. And I just wondered, we've been doing a lot of reading, a lot of research. The state of Maine is changing the rules and the regulations on commercial solar constantly because of all the issues that are arising. And I read the town's ordinances and they're basically right next to chickens. Just comment, but they kind of think they need to be updated. And I know a lot of towns are having this issue and they've put in moratoriums to hold off to see what other places across the state are doing. Well, West Athens is a really small town. We all know it's pretty small and commercial solar farms trying to, I'm not against it, but in many means, but just trying to, right now Norwich is proposing to put solar panels around three sides of my house. If you look at the lot, my house is on the end of the lot, but they're going to put solar panels. It's basically just broken. I'm just asking you guys if we can develop solar ordinances and update them.
And this is bound up off the sand across in.
Yeah, somewhere near the end.
This is the, the second time they've come in trying to develop. They bought, they bought the land, but the first time they came in.
To the meeting last time, we got some, we got the wrong dates, it was June tenth. Then we got the email, all the neighborhood got it for July. Or June tenth, March eighth.
Yeah, the dates were somehow.
That's that sort of, everybody in the neighborhood, the board association, everybody that did it to the last.
To the presentation.
I thought there was, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought there was.
Well, so the first, the first issue was they, they had, and that's where I think they're trying to, this is from what I remember from the Land Board meeting. You were there, so you can chit in. That, at the first meeting. Um, that, at the first meeting, there was a subdivision restriction for access across a piece of the land. Apparently, that has been challenged and perhaps negated by the people who bought the land. I don't have all of those facts, is that about how that falls apart? I don't remember the part about the subdivision. That was the initial issue, was a subdivision restriction that, um, limited, challenged commercial access. Is that roughly just the subdivision? And so that was the first challenge, but then Norwich bought the parcel and believe they have a...